Good question. He looks good.
And I did tell the partners about your concern about that. So he's gonna.
Sun. Did she get sunburned?
I don't think so.
Okay. Hey, sorry.
No, that's good. Anyway, so he put on his list of asks for the next story.
I was, this is the first I've seen that since I've been.
Yeah, normally.
On planning and zoning or council. Over seven years, I've never seen one. Well, maybe I wouldn't have seen it when I was on. But.
Hey, Jessica.
I was just gonna tell you, you're unmuted.
Council will call the meeting over. For the record, it is April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at four thirty-two P M. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with real call attendance.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Yep.
Councilman Hogland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Your side up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Uh, no changes to our agenda that was published, so I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Motion second to adopt agenda is published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signified by saying I.
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 Post name, the eyes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Now up the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
I move approval of this consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
I have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor signified by saying I.
Right. I.
Those post name. Yes, have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to department commission reports. Uh, council, uh, as always, I sat down with the chair of the historic preservation commission, and we did our interviews for open seats, and the resolution you have in front of you this evening is to fill that with two individuals. One of which is Pat Giddings. Pat is a longtime Meridian resident, even though he spent a little bit of time out of the area. But having someone with that historical knowledge and perspective and remembering what the fields were that were there, the families that lived there, the locations that were there, um, and someone has that passion, desire to get involved. Don't he definitely has a different, uh, background in project management, but as they are doing some projects, whether it is the work that they're doing on, you know, trying to get something listed on the sort of preservation or other things, having that skill set, skill set combined with the knowledge of the community would be really important, you know, goes back to living in Meridian in the seventies when it was a much different community than it is today, which is nice. The other one before you is Deborah Pitts, um, newer to the area, um, but definitely has a passion for historic preservation. In fact, you know, it was very interesting when we sat down and I I ran into her recently again where she's showing me the pictures of that she takes when she travels other parts of the country about what they're doing for historic preservation and coming with ideas about, you know, how do how do we recognize the history? And, uh, you know, I, and I think she also has another important concept, you know, that's nice to hear. History is people. And that was something that was very big to her, you know, the, the, the stories of people, the, the talks about a community and how do you make that be part of what you want to do? But she, she's all in on Meridian, uh, from that standpoint, and like I say, she was just down in Texas and she took more pictures of historic historical markers and that and, and, you know, was very inquisitive, like, why is the Roosevelt not on our history walk tour from that standpoint? And, you know, so we're looking forward to seeing what she brings to the commission and getting her involvement in the community. So with that, I would ask for your, uh, approval of these two individuals, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'll go on.
Sounds like you have some excellent, uh, folks to serve on the Meridian Historic Preservation Committee Commission, so I move approval of resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-three eighty-three, appointing Patrick Giddings to seat three and Deborah Pitts to seat four of the Meridian Historic Preservation Commission.
I have a motion of second to approve resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-three eighty-three. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor sign found by saying I.
I.
Post name, let's have it, and the resolution is agreed to. Thank you very much. And Mr. Johnson, thanks you very much as well to get that, those new members on the commission. Next up is I am thirteen, which will be the annual update from the Meridian Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, which will be delivered by Mr. Bevan this evening. Keith, how are you?
These are you, but I'll use this one. All right, there we go. I think we have a deck. Uh, I'm Keith Bevan. I'm the president of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Commission for the city. And I'm here to talk to you a bit about what we've done the last year, what our goals are for the coming year and you know, what we're doing with accomplishments. Start by saying the Meridian Parks and Recreation Commission is a, uh, comprised of nine members, including a youth representative who's a member, a, a young lady is in our high school. Uh, our meetings are open to the public and broadcast, just probably like city council meetings, and they're once a month on the second Wednesday at five thirty P M. And, uh, we also have a member from the city council, which is, uh, council member Overton, who's our newest member, uh, who's representative on our, is our liaison. Thank you. All right, here we go. All right. So there's a picture, uh, John Nesmith, who's the owner of Meridian Auto right here, uh, Dom Jelsimino, Mike Medlin, Jennifer Bobo, Brendan Simpson, Ellie Hood, who's our youth representative, Joe Greer, uh, who's was the previous president of the commission, Manny Roberts, who's the current vice president, and myself and councilman. And it can't be. Yep. Go back. Again, we meet the second Wednesday of every month at five thirty P M. Here in the council chambers, and we do sometimes hold offsite meetings. We will take tours where we go see one of the parks, the golf course. We'll do tours of things so that, you know, we get a hands-on feel of what the parks look like, the development, what's happening, so that we can have a better idea of the, you know, input we're having on the parks and, and, and things we're having. I mean, one of the things we do obviously is Parks and Recreation Commission is we want to be involved in community events, so we try really hard to get involved with things that, certainly the, the Christmas events and Fourth of July, the Klein or Park events, all those things that we happen to have. You can see here, uh, the picture of, uh, Grinch, uh, who's our Parks and Rec Commissioner, uh, and, uh, Dom Jelsimino, thank you. If you guys know Dom, he's a dynamic guy. He's so much fun to be around. He loves this city and he, he gets involved. Of course, Joe Greer, who used to be the previous president of the, this commission, um, and with the, the Christmas in Meridian and the, and the Santa's stuff that she does. She's super involved with the Christmas stuff, and, you know, we all try to get involved with all the events that are going on, uh, because we love Meridian, and so that's why we're here. As you know, probably in this last year, um, we, in twenty twenty-two, the city of Meridian had a, a commissioned citizen survey to assess the community's perception of parks and recreation and some of the services that we provide. And I'm proud to say that in every category, we scored higher than the average nationally in terms of, uh, quality of athletic fields, the adult sports programs, special events, all those things. Uh, and that just is a testament to the fact, you know, as the commission, we don't run these things. We don't organize them. We don't run them. It's Steve and Mike and the staff of the Meridian Parks Department that just do a phenomenal job of running the events and organizing and scheduling the, all the ball fields we have for the sporting events and the home court and volleyball and all the stuff. And that survey was the evidence that the citizens of Meridian said, yeah, you're doing a good job. Right? So kudos to these guys and, and as the commissioners, you know, makes our job easy. So with that said, you know, we don't want to rest on laurels, so we want to continue to, to, uh, focus on things that we think will help the city the most. So these are our commission goals for this year. Uh, number one is to support the design and construction of Discovery Park Phase Two, including the skate park and bike park, which I'm gonna talk about a little bit here. But if you guys know Discovery Park down there off of, uh, Lake Hazel and Eagle and Amazing Park, you know, the phase one was done a year or two ago, phase two is under design. Uh, we're gonna talk about that. Uh, the other big thing that we do as a commission is the pathways, all the, the biking and hiking and walking trails. We feel like connecting Meridian, all the parts, uh, allow people to bike and walk through the Meridian, uh, is an important thing. And here's the crazy thing. I'm gonna bring this up. Saturday, my wife and I, we were down near my, more in Boise, coming up Fairview, past Eagle, between and between Locust Grove and Meridian, we're driving along, we look over, there's two guys on horses, literally horses coming up the pathway there where the canal that goes from cherry over to pine, down that little, through those apartments. There's two guys on horses. I mean, who, who would think that, that, you know, and, I mean, Meridian is becoming a little more urban than it used to be, but there's two guys on horses because we have, and they're on one of our pathways. So it's not just bikes and, and, and walking. It's people on horseback, which I thought was amazing. So it's pretty cool. Obviously, uh, the new community center, which is obviously still in the early stages of trying to find a place and that design of that, but we have some, you know, they're gonna ask our opinion. We have some input on that. Uh, the development of the comprehensive park system update master plan, which I'm also gonna talk about that here in just a bit. Sorry. Uh, we work with the Meridian Arts Commission on putting artwork at, uh, parks. Uh, either the entrances, there's artwork around the different parks, and we help, you know, get some, our opinions and, and input on those things that, uh, that they need, and we really appreciate them. We'll work with them on those different parks. Obviously, the big thing lately in the last year or two, Lakeview Golf Course, we've had, you know, a little bit of input on that, just a report to us. We've heard from the, the consultants that helped with the renovation and how we should go about, uh, working with Lakeview Golf Course. Now the city took it over and, uh, we have some input on that. We'll continue to, to help with some of the input on that. Obviously, uh, continuing to, uh, engage with citizens, stakeholders in that. Provide feedback on Tully, the, the Tully parks, there's some specific parks that we're making work at that, uh, that we're having, uh, input on. Another big one that's a big change for the city is the pool. Now the city took over the pool, uh, and, uh, that's a great operation. And, uh, we're having some input on that. And then just other partnerships. We talked to, we, we have presentations from Eagle, Boise, Ada County Parks and Waterways. They come and present to us. We talk about how can we work together to improve both the parks, the, uh, certainly with Eagle, there's a lot about the, uh, the pathways of how can we connect our pathways to Eagle? Because Eagle then has the pathways that go all the way to Lucky Peak through Eagle, Garden City, Boise, all the way out, and there's a challenge there trying to get past Chindon and down the hill over the river, you know, but that's what we're working on. And then, of course, you know, our presence at community events and that thing that we can help. So obviously, a big thing that we're doing right now is the Discovery Park, uh, Phase Two progress. You can see the pictures here. That really cool picture is the, uh, skate park. Uh, this being designed, and we're gonna literally have a world-class skate park here in Boise. Here in Meridian, the Boise area, you know, obviously, we, you know, uh, the people designing that have designed stuff all over the world, and, and it's a world-class skate park that we think not only will be a great amenity to the citizens here in the Treasure Valley, but also might, you know, lead to, uh, people coming here, right, to be able to use that. You can see the, the picture there of one of the, the restroom concession areas. Right now, uh, we were just out there last week, uh, face two. There's a lot of infrastructure is a part of that parking lots and sidewalks and that, as well as the skate park. There's also a bike park where people, you know, you can use the bicycles and, and tracks and jumps and that, uh, which can be really awesome. Some basketball courts. Coming up this, the rest of this year are pickleball courts, tennis courts, additional picnic shelters, more softball fields, lighting. You know, one of the things we're trying to do is add some things for, uh, teenagers, that kids will go there and, and use the, uh, basketball courts and the, the skate parks and bike parks and some of those other things that, you know, uh, gives them, uh, kids a, a place to meet and hang out and have fun and, uh, be kids, I guess. So last year, we also had a uh, uh, review of our pathway systems by a group called the Urban Land Institute, and they spent several days here and did some uh, exploration of our parks, of our pathway systems and some things we can do better. Their recommendations, although they, they thought we did a great job with our pathways, we need to continue to expand those things. Uh, some of the things are listed here, wayfinding, which is just signage to let people know you're on a pathway, you're in the right place. And then the, the last thing, identity and branding, letting, well, this is a city of Meridian pathway, um, and, uh, uh, let them know, uh, where they're going, how to get back to where they were going, all those things. We don't want people to get on a path and get lost, right, out in the middle of the, you know, as you get further west, it's a little more, uh, less defined in terms of where you are. So that was part of that is letting people know you're on the right path. You can stay here. The standards and amenities that has to do with, you know, trash cans and benches and rest spots. Uh, we have some spaces where there are bicycle repair stations. So if people's on a bike, they get a flat tire or something happens, they have ability to fix some of those things. And that was some of the other stuff, the recommendations that they had for us to continue to expand those items. Uh, the community center planning, you know, uh, for us, obviously, this is still early stages. We're still in the place, I think, of trying to find a place for that community center. So as the commission, we, I don't know that we have a lot of say in that. It's probably more commit, uh, the, the council and other people, but in terms of how it can help the Parks and Recreation and our mission to help with those things in the city, we will continue to help with that in terms of the design and, and how that, uh, how that works. So next big thing, obviously, which I oh, long. Uh, Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which was adopted here a couple of months ago by the, uh, city council. Uh, that was commissioned last year. It went on for a long time, was a lot of work going in, um, to developing that, uh, for the next, you know, the previous plan was from twenty fifteen. So it's been almost, you know, eight years since we updated that plan, uh, as to the goals and mission of the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Meridian. It was a great job, a lot of interviews with city, uh, uh, citizens, the inventory of the space, the land, the, uh, equipment, the goals, everything that goes into running the Parks and Recreation Department, uh, was taken into consideration. Uh, we read it as the commission, we read it, we reviewed it, had input into it, we liked it, we passed it on to the city council, and I believe you guys, uh, adopted it back on February seventh, so, uh, that should guide the work of the Parks and Recreation Department for the near future. I, I mentioned earlier, you know, one of the things that's on our goals and, uh, mission of our, uh, of the commission is to work with the uh, uh, arts commission on arts, art and, uh, projects in city parks. As you can see here, some of the things we're using, there's Seasons Park, Ten Mile Creek Hub, Trail Hub and Discovery Park. Uh, Seasons Park needed some new signage, uh, the what they had there was old and worn out and, and, uh, then we, we designed some new stuff. You can see the picture here is kind of what we came up with, with the leaves. It's actually layers of colored acrylic, um, which, uh, was gonna look really good and, uh, be a nice, uh, point of focus for people to know that's there. Ten Mile Creek, uh, Trail Hub, which is our, and Ten Mile right there by the Maverick and the water treatment plant where there's uh, the trail that continues out west. That design we thought would be good to have is sort of a native focus. Uh, the design has, uh, kind of native floor and fauna with, uh, some of the native, uh, birds in that design. You can see, I think that's the, is it the mountain bluebird? Is that what you can see on the, on the picture there? And I think some of the flowers are like the syringa and that. Obviously, we want to keep things local and, and, uh, based in Idaho. And then Discovery Park, uh, some new uh, branding and, and, uh, what we're doing out there in the south side of Boise. Sorry. South side of Meridian there, uh, to tie in the, we thought that, you know, the whole branding with the discovery was about, you know, being out there and some of the branding has to do with the south side of Ada County, the birds of prey and some of those things, as well as, uh, wildlife and those things that we're, uh, focused on. All right. Another big item that's been on, uh, the city's agenda for the last year or two is, uh, Lakeview Golf Course and the fact that, uh, the city, uh, took over, uh, responsibility, ownership of Lakeview Golf Course. We've had some input in some of the things there. Uh, just, you know, if you haven't been out there, there's a new irrigation system that they had some issues with watering all the grass out there, and they completely redid a lot of the irrigation process. I don't know if you guys went out there. We went out, we took a tour, uh, last fall and the ability for them to the, the machinery they have to put pipe in the ground and that cover it up. It's, it's an amazing process that the company. the company they hired to put in the new, all that new irrigation system, the new well pumps, new cart pass. New golf carts. And of course, what's coming up is some clubhouse renovations and some better shade on the east side of the clubhouse there between the clubhouse and the driving range. People can sit out there and eat and enjoy their time and not be quite in direct sun. So that continues, you know, and we have some input on that. They, you know, we review things and help with, with some of that. Another interesting thing that's happened here in the last year is at Tully and Bear Creek Parks is we've replaced some of the playground equipment to make it a little bit more inclusive and accessible. And what you'll see in the pictures there is the old playground equipment and the new playground equipment. This was paid for with a community block development grant. So that was a nice thing for us to be able to do. And the other cool thing is there's a company that will take old playground equipment, remove it and they do what they need to do, fix it up and they take it to less developed countries. So the playground equipment you see in the before picture was taken and is used in less developed countries for parks in those places. So it doesn't just get put in a landfill or, or destroyed. It actually goes to a cool use in another place. And then of course we have our new playground equipment. In, in this year, we're also looking at having a similar upgrade in Bear Creek Park and Tully Park. There's another big thing is the swimming pool. And the man, it's been a lot of work at the, at the pool. You can, I, I won't list it. You can see from the list of all the things that were done. Some of those things allowed, made a better quality of the water in the pool, the UV system and all those things. As well as accessibility to swimmers. One of the challenges they had last year, and I, I think, you know, this year it might be the same is lifeguards. At a pool, you need lifeguards and the ability for, to have as many hours as we want to have that pool open is dependent on how many lifeguards we have that we can schedule to work hours. And that's a continuing thing that the city, that, that the Parks and Rec is working on. To have enough lifeguards so that can be open as much as, as our citizens want. But you know, we can only be open as much as we have lifeguards to, to be on staff. With that said, a couple of things, we instituted a swim test that when you show up, if you want to swim in the deep end or go off the life, the diving board and that, you have to pass a swim test and you, you know, the lifeguards, you know, they stop and you have to swim and do, do certain things to show you, you have the ability to swim. And then you get a wristband, you get a wristband. And that way they know if you don't have a wristband, they see on the life, on, on the diving board, they can say, hey, wait, wait, you shouldn't be there. You need to go to the shallow end. And that has dramatically reduced the instances of lifeguards having to rescue somebody. I think, I don't know the numbers, but before we took it over, it was like a daily occurrence. The lifeguards were having to jump in and save a kid. And now it's like once or twice a month, it's rare. Because of that, because we've said, hey, kids shouldn't be in the deep end if they can't swim. And you know, that's a good thing. We want to protect our kids. And I've, I've said this in the commission meeting. Both of, I have two daughters, older, they were both lifeguards at a public pool. And my older daughter was a lifeguard. Before, we lived over in the Twin Falls area and she was a lifeguard and one of the duties they had, they asked their, the lifeguards at the pool to go and be lifeguards for the Spudman Triathlon in Burley. And so, you know, Saturday morning, six o'clock, she goes out there and she's standing on the bank of the Snake River. And there's a gentleman who there, you know, all these swimmers are going by and she's looking and there's a guy out there. She sees he, he's floundering. And, and he obviously is having struggle. She jumps in, swims out, has, and she pulls him in. Well, he had had a new he had just bought a new like, not life jacket, wet suit, thank you. It was too tight and he couldn't breathe. And he, because he couldn't breathe, he started struggling. She brought him in. And so I'm almost like, my daughter saved the guy's life because she was a lifeguard. This is a sales pitch. If any of you guys know teenagers, anybody Meridian Pool, we need lifeguards. So, you know, send that out to anybody you know, it's a great job. It's fun. They get to be outside. They get in the sun. They learn a skill that you know, someday they may help somebody save, save a life. And that's my sales pitch for my, for, for this, for the Meridian Pool and lifeguards and, and that it really does impact people. So anyway, we're going to continue to, to make changes. There're going to be some artwork put on the side of the building for our inner, our, our relationship with the Arts Commission. There's going to be a big mural put on the side of the, the building there at the swimming pool and it's going to be fun. So all right. Oh, and it's scheduled to open on June 5th. And they're currently hiring. So if you know anybody wants to be a lifeguard, let them know. A couple of new things at, new amenities at Settlers Park has some new cornhole courts that are integrated with the horseshoe pits, as you can see in the picture here, obviously cornhole is a big thing, a lot of fun. And that's a cool thing that's happening. And then Kleiner Park has four new pickleball courts, which was funded in a partnership with the, the city and Brighton and Ball Ventures. And those are on the west side of the big hill where people sled and there and that's a great new amenity that, and there's, I think Ball and Brighton built some condo apartments there that are a 55 plus community, which I think maybe ties into maybe football and that's great, you know, opportunity for them. If you look at the picture, I think that kind of what that looks like. So there we go. All right. And that's everything we've been doing the last year. So I thank you for your time. Any questions or comments or anything you want to know? I may not know, but I got Steve here to buy detail of things. So.
Thank you, Keith. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
No question. Just a huge thank you to you and to the commission. It was fun braving the cold last week and it was cold. We went out and looked at Phase Two of Discovery Park and you actually, I think you missed a couple of amenities, but then I could say that still miss a couple more because I've never seen a park in my life. It's a one-stop shop for just about everything that you want to do. Yeah. I don't think you mentioned the hammocks.
No, probably not.
Bocce ball?
Yes, bocce ball.
Sand volleyball?
Ball, yeah, sand volleyball.
It's got one of everything at least, if not half a dozen. It's pretty impressive and you know, my hats off to you guys and your commission and our Parks Department for what's going to be a signature park in this valley.
It is. And thank you. And, but again, I we're almost sort of on the backend of like the, the Parks Department comes to us, here's what we're going to do. And we're like, that's amazing. Yes, let's do it. So it's not like we're kind of, we don't necessarily come up with a lot of those ideas. It's Steve and his staff that there's something that, and I'll throw this out there. A couple of years ago, there was a big tree over here in the park. It was cut down, huh? Centennial Park, just the one that's just right, a couple of blocks away. Big elm? Oak, big, huge, I mean, big eight foot diameter tree that was dying. And they're like, we have to take this tree down. For safety reasons, right? So we cut it down. But then the guys at the city are like, you know what? We have this big stump. You know what we're going to do? We're going to take that and we're going to make an amenity at Discovery Park where there's a water activity. We're to take that stump, turn it outside, carve it out and use this. And that's the point is that you guys, you have this Parks Department, they care. The employees of the Parks Department, they look at things, how can we use this? It's a historical tree. It means something. How can we reuse this? And it wasn't us. It wasn't the commission. We looked, that went, that's awesome. It was Steve and his guys that, you know, and, and so I don't know who it was that did that, but I, I'm going to brag every day about Meridian Parks. All right. That's just who I am. I, Steve laughs, the, the Christmas parade, I get a little crazy on the float about we're literally the best parks in the world in the United States, you know? And a couple of days ago, I was watching the news and the, the Parks Director for Boise was on the, the, the channel talking about all this stuff they do. You know, Boise has great parks. We have great parks. Eagle has great parks. That's why people want to move here. Right? That's why people want to come to the Treasure Valley is it's just, you know, we care. We care.
So Keith, did you just?
Sorry.
Quit investing in parks and people won't move here? Is that what you said? I just want to make sure I got that correct. Oh, all right. Hey, we won't put words in your mouth.
I just, you know, I just, I just know that, 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 that between the commission and the Parks Department themselves, you know, we care about making things good for the citizens of Meridian. You know, and, and, and we try to listen of what they like, what they don't like, what needs to change. You know, there's been challenges at home court. And just, and part of it was just so many people want to use it. How do we, how do we manage that? And the, all the softball tournaments during the summer, how do we manage that? You know, and it's just, that's a good thing, right? When you have people that want to use our amenities in our city. And we have to try to manage that. You know, it's a problem, but it's a good problem. It's, it's better than you know, people not wanting to be here. And as the survey, the survey we had, people they like our parks and people are happy. So can't rest our laurels. We'll keep working. So.
Council, any additional questions for Keith?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
I have a question. I just want to say thank you very much for your service. Special place in my heart for our volunteers. I had the opportunity to volunteer and I just, just really appreciate all the commitment that the Parks Commissioners have made and how much they care about what happens. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I keep, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Mayor.
All right. We'll look forward to seeing some more great things this year.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
For the record, Mr. Cavanagh Guy here at 5:03 PM. With that, we will move on to item number 14, 14, the request withdrawal application for Meridian OZ Apartments. Turn this over to Ms. Neri.
Thank you, Mr. Members of the council. We have kind of an unusual request on your agenda today. So number 14 is a request to withdraw. There is a letter from the applicant to withdraw this application at this time. But it comes on the heels of a decision the council's already made and the findings of fact for that are on. And so if you recall from a couple of weeks ago, we told them we would schedule it. They asked for it that day of the hearing. We told them we'd schedule it. They could submit a letter because they hadn't submitted anything in writing at that point. And then the council would consider it. And again, you, you're free to deny their request and approve the findings, or if you wish to grant their request, then we can just vacate the findings. But it is unusual in the sense that I was trying to think of a circumstance that someone requested withdrawal after the decision was already made, but prior to the findings being approved. And I couldn't think of one. Normally when we've had withdrawals, it's because we've had a public hearing. The applicant can see that it's not going to likely get favored or approved. They'll usually get a continuance to see if they can change it or fix it or do something different. And if they can't within a short window of time, they'll usually ask to withdraw. So that's the common one I've seen and we don't see a lot of those. But I don't think I've ever seen one requested after the decision was actually made. But it is within our code. It is allowed to be asked. There's nothing prohibiting it. I did raise the concern that the council had raised in the conversation a couple of weeks ago on what precedential value that would be and is that a wise thing to allow to have? And so I did tell Mr. Parsons that I hate to get all included on his list for conversation in the future of a UDC amendment on whether or not we're not going to allow application for it after the decision has been made. But in this particular case, it's allowed. Again, it is a discretionary function. You don't have to grant it. You don't need to have to even have a reason to not grant it. You're not required to grant a request to withdraw. So any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Neri, in, in their letter, the, the last paragraph, they talked about applicant was not afforded an opportunity to respond to public testimony at the hearing, et cetera, et cetera. Can you speak to that?
Sure. Mr. Member of the council, so I distinctly remember because there was some public testimony and they did get back up and they did have the last word and we are really good at that and due process. But secondarily, I've, I recall, and I didn't go back and look at the tape, but I believe the council asked if they wanted a continuance because they wanted, if they wanted more time to consider it and consider some alternatives and they opted not. So they had opportunity to respond and and they were afforded appropriate due process. So again, they've, they could request reconsideration if they wish, but that's, that's up to them.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Port.
Bill, I thought it was unusual because the only, Ted, correct me if I'm wrong, but the only substantive effect of allowing them to withdraw is it permits them to reapply with a substantially similar project with what was just denied.
Correct.
Denial would prohibit them bringing back what was denied.
Correct.
So it doesn't make any sense to me why you would not complete the application. Deny the withdrawal and just prove the findings.
And it's certainly within the council's discretion. Councilman Worton.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
Question for Councilman Worton. And so what you're saying is by denial, there is that one year period where they can't come back, but since we know that they cannot do the project as they had planned. I mean, we saw the problems with that. We denied it. They'll come back with something different. That's not subject to the one year. So they can come back within that year's time with a completely different project. Yes, I suspect that they want to do. So, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Councilmember Hogan, Councilman Worton really did a very succinct job of capturing kind of my comments and feelings. So will, Mayor, maybe a motion's in order. I move that we deny the request to withdraw the application for Meridian OZ Apartments, application H dash 2022 dash 0073.
Second. Have a motion, a second to deny the request to withdraw. Is there discussion? If not, call the roll.
Mr. Mayor. Overton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Worton.
Aye.
Aye.
All eyes motion carries and the request to withdraw the application is denied. Councilman Cavanagh.
We'll move on to item number 15 and I move that we approve the finding and facts and conclusions of law for the denial of the Meridian OZ Apartments, H dash 2022 dash 0073.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve item 15 is there discussion? If not, call the roll.
Overton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Worton.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes motion carry and item 15 is agreed to. With that, we are on to item 16, which is fiscal year 2023 budget amendment, amount of $167,732. We'll turn this over to Mr. Fraser.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. We'll talk a little bit about radio encryption to explain the backstory here. So every emergency responder in Meridian, including our friends in fire, use a radio network that's operated by the Ada County Sheriff's Office. And I think we all remember back in the day when television signals went digital. You had to have a digital antenna, otherwise you didn't get TV anymore after the cutoff date for that. This is kind of a similar situation. We need a radio to be able to decode the signal that is sent to us by the radio network. About six years ago now, we started incrementally replacing all of our radios to catch up to the newest encryption standard that will be sent out in the future. COVID really set us back because it was hard to get a hold of radios. It was hard to get them installed. You know, we all know that story. So it set us back and we weren't buying units that we couldn't get and couldn't get installed anyway. The sheriff's office has escalated their timeline for putting this plan into action. They want to go live with this in the fall of 2024. Radios that we purchased last October are still not here and we have no timeline as to when we will get them. If the amendment is not approved, we would have to purchase them in 24. With no guarantee, we would even get them in our possession by the fall of 24. So to have any shot of getting ready for this in the fall of 24 and being a good partner for the sheriff's office, we need to order them now. Hence the amendment. And additionally, we just received word from Motorola that mid-year, there's going to be a 4% price increase on these products. Hence the amendment. And additionally, we just received word from Motorola that mid-year, there's going to be a 4% price increase on these products anyway. And just like everything else, the price keeps going up. So a quick explanation. I'd ask that you approve the amendment, but I'll certainly answer any questions. Yeah.
Thank you. And we do have fire support here to back up what he's saying from that standpoint, if necessary. Council only questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
There's your quick, quick question and I recognize maybe quoting council members around by sideways question here. When you talk about encryption, does that prevent then the, the public from essentially hearing the communication that's going on and.
Yeah.
Recognizing this is being transmitted, I would assume to the public airwaves. What are the, what are the legalities around that? And preventing the public from being able to hear that type of communication?
Right. It's a good question. So it's not every channel in the valley here. You can listen to police activity and fire activity on what are called. Primary channels with the scanner, the public, the news media can hear that. But there's other channels in the case of fire where protected health information is broadcast, patient information. In the case of police, there's criminal information broadcast that's subject to FBI and CGS rules. So we have to be able to keep the general public from hearing those things, not everything. And there are additional channels that are encrypted, like when there's special operations taking place. SWAT operations taking place and things that for safety reasons, the public should not be able to hear. By and large, the public can hear the vast majority of things that occur on those primary channels in the valley.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
All through the missionary for Officer Frazier. Those channels that then are encrypted and the public is preventing, prevented from hearing that, is that guided by federal law or department policy?
Some of it's guided by federal law in the case of patient information or CGS compliance. The rest of it is governed by a board that oversees all of the radio communications in the valley. For one, and then within Ada County. So that board can decide which channels are or are not encrypted.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the education.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
It just sounds like we're accelerating an existing known expense.
Basically.
Soon or are we going to have a similar request coming from fire to accelerate that? Soon? Makes sense to get in front of it.
Any further questions, comments or motions?
Sure.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'm happy to make the motion that we approve the fiscal 2023 budget amendment, the amount of 167,732 dollars for Motorola APX radio conversion.
A second.
Have motion two seconds to approve the budget. Is there any discussion?
If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Overton.
Aye.
Perot.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Orton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes motion carries and I'm just agree to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
I move that we adjourn our work session.
Have a motion to adjourn. All in favor of seeing that by saying aye.
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 Close day. Yes, haven't. We are adjourned.
We don't have a community invocations. Let me call the city council regular meeting to order for the record today is Tuesday, April 18th, 2023 at 6:02 PM. Our first order of business is roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Our attendance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilwoman Burrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here. Next item is pledge of allegiance. Please rise for the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God.
We don't have anybody sign up for the invocation tonight. So next item is adoption of the agenda. Councilman Borton.
Mr. President. There are no changes. So I move that we approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Our motion second to approve the adoption of the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have adopted the agenda. Next up is a proclamation for the third year in a row of the Meridian Wrestling Team. Please come on in.
Well, this is fantastic. You know, this is a special occasion. I mean, you guys are making this a regular deal, and I kind of like that. We even decided the third time, you got to have your picture up on the big screen. So we wanted to do that. It's especially special to me since I am alum of Meridian High School. So I think this is fantastic. Appreciate you guys representing my alma mater very, very well. So let me ask you a few quick questions. How many of you have been on the team for, and I know some of you younger just on the team coming up, freshmen, sophomore, but how many have you been on the team for three years, three championships? You know, it's one thing to do it one time, and that's a great thing to have and to take away, and it's a memory you have for the rest of your life. But three times, that's a heck of an accomplishment. But no pressure, but we expect you back next year. Also, let me ask you, how many of you placed at state this year? Raise your hand. Now, of course, I'm curious. If you placed that state and you did, raise your hand again. If you placed the state, raise your hand. Nice and high. Now, hold up how many fingers? How many times have you won at state? Number of times? If you just, okay, you placed. Okay, that's good. One, okay, if you just won, take down. If you're two or more, keep your hand up. Okay, how many? Three? Two of you have done it three times. All three years. That's fantastic. Congratulations. And who's a junior? You're the junior. Again, and no pressure on you for a fourth time. None at all, is there? No. I think if you've won it three times, you put enough pressure on yourself that you want to do it four times. I'm sure. Yeah. Yep, that'd be awesome. That'd be awesome. I think there's only, in 5A, only 10 players in the history that they keep records have done it four times, I think. I'm not positive, but I think I saw some about that. But that'd be fantastic. It'd be number 11. So, well, we've got this special proclamation. Mayor Simison's out, but he signed this before he left the meeting. So we're good to go here. So let me read this. Whereas being a Meridian High School wrestler is more than escapes, takedowns, pins, and achieving state titles. It is training to build leadership, character, confidence, teamwork, and resilience. All traits needed to succeed on the mat, in the classroom, and in the real world. And whereas the work, hard work and dedication of the Meridian Wrestling Team and coaches has resulted in a three-peat to become the 2023 state wrestling champions. And whereas your tenacity racked up 280.5 team points to once again bring the trophy home to Meridian. And whereas the meridian warriors have continued to conquer the competition and become the dominant squad in the 5A ranks. And whereas the leadership, training, and discipline of their coaches helped all team members to focus their talents, passion, and determination to become a dynasty with each player making valuable contributions to the victory. Therefore, I, Brad Hoagland, on behalf of Mayor Robert E. Simison, hereby proclaim April 18th, 2023, as Meridian High School Wrestling State Champions Day in the city of Meridian, and a call upon the community to join us in congratulating the Meridian High Warriors on their remarkable athletic achievement and for representing Meridian so proudly in the state tournament. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And ladies. And ladies. And you were stake, you placed as well? That's fantastic. First place. That's awesome. Coach Terry, come on up, say a few words.
Thanks, Gonzo. Yeah, the kids are always making fun of my style, which I appreciate. Yeah, once again, complete team effort, top to bottom, right? You don't get the job done in the sport of wrestling with one or two individuals, right? It was a team effort, and we're missing some guys that are at wrestling practice and rugby practice. But this is most of the state team, and we actually have quite the coaching staff. I think there's 15 or 16 of us. And yeah, it's just a lot of selfless people investing a lot of time in these kids. And it's cool when you get to see the fruit of your labor. And these kids, they do it all, right? They lift, they run, they wrestle. They live a clean lifestyle, and it's cool to see them get it done. And we definitely, you know, these aren't easy to win, so we're super grateful. That's all I got. Thanks for all the support, guys.
All right, folks. We're passing out. I thought the easiest way to do it, we have city meridian pins for each one of you. They're being passed down. But we're going to take a picture here. We'll go in front of the podium. And the proclamation, we have the generic one, but we have the one with everybody's name that from the team, state champions, that you guys can have as well and put on display. And it'll be in city records forever. So when somebody wants to look you up, you know, when Google's not a thing anymore, there'll be something else there. You'll be. So anyway, so keep passing those down, and then let's stand in front. We can all get photos. All right, let's hear it. Let's hear it. All right, give him a hand. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are not done with recognitions this evening. This is a great night. This is kind of fun. Next up, department commission reports. We have an action item from Public Works. And the 2023 Environmental Excellence Award. Jason Korn, come on up and put him into yours. And I flipped it around, and I probably shouldn't have. I don't have enough practice, so. That lever on the left side there, you can pull out and then swing around. You can do it. It's on the side. Yeah, there you go. All right.
All right. Thanks, members of the council. My name is Jason Korn. I'm the environmental programs coordinator with the city of Meridian. It is my honor to be here this evening to present the 2023 Environmental Excellence Awards. Our environmental excellence awards program is a way for us to recognize those individuals, businesses, and organizations in our community that really demonstrate a commitment to environmental sustainability and making Meridian a better place to live. And yeah, in this year, we had several nominations from the community at large, which we reviewed with our cross-departmental team here at the city to select two winners for this year. And it is really exciting to honor two volunteer-led programs. And with that, I will bring up our first recipient. So Dan Frazier has been volunteering with the Recycle Bicycle Program, which is a partnership with Meridian Solid Waste Commission, Republic Services, where they rescue bikes that were destined for the landfill and reconstruct them into usable bikes, which are then put out to the community.
Well, this is fantastic. You know, this is a special occasion. I mean, you guys are making this a regular deal, and I kind of like that. We even decided the third time you got to have your picture up on the big screen. So we wanted to do that. It's especially special to me since I am alum of Meridian High School. So I think this is fantastic. Appreciate you guys representing my alma mater very, very well. So let me ask you a few quick questions. How many of you have been on the team for, and I know some of you younger just on the team coming up, freshmen, sophomore, but how many have you been on the team for three years, three championships? You know, it's one thing to do at one time, and that's a great thing to have and to take away, and it's a memory you have for the rest of your life. But but three times, that's a heck of an accomplishment. But no pressure, but we expect you back next year. Also, let me ask you, how many of you placed at State this year? Raise your raise your hand. Now, of course, I'm curious, if you placed that state and you did, raise your hand again. If you place the state, raise your hand, nice and high. Now, hold up how many fingers? How many times have you won at State? Number of times? If you just, okay, you placed, okay, that's good. One, okay, if you just won, take down. If you're two or more, keep your hand up. Okay, how many, three, two of you have done it three times? All three years. That's fantastic. Congratulations. And who's a junior? You're the junior again, and no pressure on you for a fourth time. None at all, is there? No. I think if you've won it three times, you put enough pressure on yourself that you want to do it four times. I'm sure. Yeah. Yep, that'd be awesome. That'd be awesome. I think there's only in 5A, only 10 players in the history that they keep records have done it four times, I think. I'm not, I'm not positive, but I think I saw some about that. But that'd be fantastic. It'd be number 11. So, well, we've got this special proclamation. Mayor Mayor Simison's out, but he signed this before he left the meeting. So we're, we're good to go here. So let me read this. Whereas being a Meridian High School wrestler is more than escapes, takedowns, pins, and achieving state titles. It is training to build leadership, character, confidence, teamwork, and resilience. All traits needed to succeed on the mat, in the classroom, and in the real world. And whereas the work, hard work and dedication of the Meridian Wrestling Team and Coaches has resulted in a three-peat to become the 2023 State Wrestling Champions. And whereas your tenacity racked up 280.5 team points to once again bring, bring the trophy home to Meridian. And whereas the Meridian Warriors have continued to conquer the competition and become the dominant squad in the 5A ranks. And whereas the leadership, training, and discipline of their coaches helped all team members to focus their talents, passion, and determination to become a dynasty, with each player making valuable contributions to the victory. Therefore, I, Brad Hoagland, on behalf of Mayor Robert E. Simison, hereby proclaim April 18th, 2023, as Meridian High School Wrestling State Champions Day in the city of Meridian, and a call upon the community to join us in congratulating the Meridian High Warriors on their remarkable athletic achievement and for representing Meridian so proudly in the state tournament. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And ladies, and ladies. And you were saying you placed as well? That's a fantastic first place. That's awesome. Oh, Terry, come on up, say a few words.
Thanks, Gonzo. Yeah, the kids are always making fun of my style, which I appreciate. Yeah, once again, complete team effort, top to bottom, right? You don't get the job done in the sport of wrestling with one or two individuals, right? It was a, it was a team effort, and we're missing some guys that are at wrestling practice and rugby practice. But this is most of the state team, and we actually have quite the coaching staff. I think there's 15 or 16 of us. And yeah, it's just a lot of, a lot of selfless people investing a lot of time in these kids. And it's cool when you get to see the fruit of your labor. And these kids, they, they do it all, right? They lift, they run, they wrestle. They live a clean lifestyle, and it's cool to see them get it done. And we definitely, you know, these aren't easy to win, so we're super grateful. That's all I got. Thanks for all the support, guys.
All right, folks, we're passing out. I thought the easiest way to do it. We have a city of Meridian pins for each one of you. They're being passed down. But we're going to take a picture here. We'll go in front of the podium and the proclamation. We have the generic one, but we have the one with everybody's name that from the, from the team, state champions that you guys can have as well and put on display. And it'll be in city records forever. So when somebody wants to look you up, you know, when Google's not a thing anymore, there'll be something else there you'll be. So anyway, so keep passing those down, and then let's stand in front, and we can all get photos. Yeah, let's hear it. Let's hear it. All right, give him a hand. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are not done with recognitions this evening. This is a great night. This is kind of fun. Next up, Department Commission reports. We have an action item that from Public Works and the 2023 Environmental Excellence Award. Jason Korn, come on up and put him into yours. And I flipped it around, and I probably shouldn't have. I don't have enough practice, so. That lever on the left side there, you can pull out and then swing around. You can do it. It's on the side. Yeah, there you go. All right, so.
All right. All right. Thanks, members of the council. My name is Jason Korn. I'm the Environmental Programs Coordinator with the City of Meridian. It is my honor to be here this evening to present the 2023 Environmental Excellence Awards. Our Environmental Excellence Awards program is a way for us to recognize those individuals, businesses, and organizations in our community that really demonstrate a commitment to environmental sustainability and making Meridian a better place to live. Yeah, and this year, we had several nominations from the community at large, which we reviewed with our cross-departmental team here at the city to select two winners for this year. And it is really exciting to honor two volunteer-led programs. And with that, I will bring up our first recipient. So Dan Frazier has been volunteering with the Recycle Bicycle Program, which is a partnership with Meridian Solid Waste Commission, Republic Services, where they rescue bikes that were destined for the landfill and reconstruct them into usable bikes, which are then put out to the community. And Dan has been serving as a volunteer for picking up those bikes, getting them out of the trash bins, taking them, revamping them, taking what parts he can, making those bikes that could then be used by children, adults, teens. He's been doing that for six years now and has completed, from I talked with them earlier this afternoon, over 1,800 bikes that have gone back out into our community to be used by those, you know, kids, refugee families. Really, it's all across the board. Anyone that needs a bike, you know, he's played a really big part in making this program a success. I'd like to bring Dan up. And our second Environmental Excellence Award for tonight is the Kleiner, Kleiner Park Pollinator Project. Now, the Kleiner Park Pollinator Project started with the Meridian Co-op Gardeners, who had an existing food plot in Kleiner Park where families are able to learn how to grow food. They grow a large amount of food, a lot of that's donated to the food banks. And, you know, they saw some leftover land there and asked our Parks Department if they could use that for a pollinator garden. And thankfully, they agreed. And through a lot of efforts on their parts, they were able to secure grant funding, work with Idaho Botanical Gardens, several other volunteer groups, and get the garden in the ground. And since then, there's actually another pollinator garden that has gone in at Heroes Park. So it's expanded beyond just Kleiner's Park, and I really hope to see it keep expanding. And I know with their leadership, the Meridian Co-op Gardeners, and now the Kleiner Park Pollinator Project, that we'll be able to see that. And really having those pollinator gardens are vitally important for our ecosystem and having those plants available for those bees, insects, birds, beetles, all the things that really help our food and our landscape exist. They're vitally important ecosystem functions and very thankful to have them in our community. With that, can I bring up Julie Boeckencamp to represent the Kleiner Park Pollinator Project? And everyone else, too. Yes. I'd like to thank everyone for attending and supporting our winners and look forward to nominations for next year, which are available on our website. Nominate for the 2024 Environmental Excellence Awards. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. If you can flip that around to real quick. Thank you.
Mr. President. Yes. Jason, turn that around, maybe just a quick moment of privilege. So I love these awards, Jason. So thank you. And, you know, often these awards are a result of a big impact in our community. And certainly, both of these awards did that here. But if I can, I just, Dan, I just want to thank you for your service. 1,800 is a really, really large number. And I don't know about the 1,799, but I know about one. And there's a very remarkable young man who's very close to our family, that your hard work and that bike made a huge difference in that young man's life. And in a time when he didn't feel like there were anybody thinking of him, you, a stranger, repaired a bike that he then took over. And I just, from, from one resident to another, thank you for making a difference in that young man's life. And thank you for all you do for our community. It starts with one, and you made a big impact on that young man's life. And so thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Apologies.
Thank you for those kind words, Councilman Cavanagh. We appreciate that. And to the all the award recipients, fantastic job. Glad you're a community. This is what makes Meridian so great. And we look forward to seeing who's the recipients are next year. Thank you, Jason. Next item under is public forum. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for the future public forum?
Mr. President, we did not.
Okay. Moving forward, we have a public hearing regarding investment of Community Development Block Grant Funds. So Crystal, turn it over to you.
Thank you. As you said, that I'm Crystal Campbell. I'm with the Meridian CDBG program. And this is the final step of our planning public hearing. We did receive a few, a few comments, so I wanted to give you a quick presentation with that update. And just a reminder that this, the purpose of this was to gather feedback from the community on partnerships for public service funding. So we have had a few presentations. The public hearing was open on April 4th at our council meeting. I also presented at the Meridian Gathering and Resource Center on April 8th. And then we have this final presentation tonight. Throughout the process, then we've been accepting comments through phone calls, emails, however people wanted to provide those. We didn't actually receive any, but we did also put out a questionnaire, and we received responses from 18 residents on that questionnaire. So since we didn't receive any other comments, the next several slides are summaries of what we did receive on the questionnaire. The questions on that were contained in the questionnaire, they were based on the services that are available. And then we also left a space for people to fill in other services that they might have accessed. So the services that people have accessed that responded to this were childcare assistance, domestic violence services, emergency rental assistance, food access, legal services, and utility assistance. For the most part, the level of ease was not too difficult to access. There were a few that they did list as difficult. That was childcare assistance, legal services, and utility assistance. And for the most part, that was related to either eligibility requirements that are typically set at the federal level or the lack of knowledge in the community on what's available. We received these six comments, and the full comments will be included in our action plan this summer. But a brief summary of what we received was that financial eligibility is a barrier to accessing services. Meridian should support the homeless programs operated in Boise, since that's where residents are accessing those services. There was also a comment that COVID funding is temporary and will leave a gap. And there was some frustration with the assumption that nothing will come of this questionnaire. There was also a request for assistance with housing affordability to seniors to be addressed because it's desperately needed and that the people need more information on accessing services in the community. So we did receive some suggested partnerships, which was what we were looking for. And it was good to see that the majority of the services people were asking for are current contacts. There are people we've already emailed the application to. So that would be services for things like emergency rental assistance, childcare scholarships, homeless services, healthcare, utility assistance, and food banks. But there was a request for legal services. And so we're doing some more targeted outreach for potential partners that we can work with on legal services. And while we're sending the application to them, there's only so much we can do if they don't apply. So that's the most that we can do with that. There were also three ineligible projects that we unfortunately are not able to address with our CDBG funding. Those were landscape maintenance, property tax reduction, and grocery credits. So they're great suggestions that would help the population, but unfortunately, we can't do anything with that. So that, again, the purpose of this was to try to find partners that we could reach out to to apply for the public service grant. And we will use that information to inform our action plan. And there will be an opportunity this summer for people to provide further comments on that action plan when it's closer to being completed. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Crystal. Any questions for Ms. Campbell? Mr. President. Councilman Borden.
Crystal, on the additional outreach, did they provide any context or example of reason for the request reaching to legal services or is it an unmet need that you tried to acquire here?
No, they're, no, they did not. They just basically checked a box and said that that was a need and that they had difficulty accessing it, but they didn't specify the type of law that they were looking for or anything else.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Crystal, on the ineligible projects, at least the landscape maintenance project on its surface, seems like it may be a potential fit for a neighborhood grant. Have we done any type of follow-up to encourage them that, hey, this program doesn't maybe meet your needs, but there's another program that maybe would? Or if not, is that something you'd be willing to do?
I will have to double check and see if this person left me their contact information. But that is a great suggestion, so I will follow up and see if I can find that, who the person was. But I can also send out an update to the contact list I sent it to to provide responses to the comments that were received.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Council, any further questions? Not. Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to testify?
Mr. President, we do not.
Okay. Is there anybody online who is, would care to testify? And don't see anybody on the list that looks like they're willing to testify that are online, so.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Cavanagh.
Is it anyone here that wants to provide any testimony? I move that we close the public hearing regarding the investment of community development block grants.
Second.
A motion to second to close the public hearing regarding our CDBG grant fund program. We will do a voice vote. So all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, and the public hearing is closed. So, Mr. President, Councilman Borden.
Just a real quick comment on it. I think the comment that Crystal made about the questionnaire might not be, have a lot of weight with us or with you as an administrator. I don't know if that's necessarily true. There might not be a lot of input, but you do a great job of doing outreach to our community, trying to gather information. Really, all we can do is make, provide opportunities for people to participate and provide input. If some choose not to or a large volume don't, and, you know, that tells us information as well. So it is important to us when we receive that type of feedback. So you sharing it helps, and I know you do everything you can to get people opportunities to participate in this program, and that's really all we can do. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman Borden. All right, moving forward. Next up is a public hearing that's continued from March 14th, H2022-0084, Alexander's Landing Subdivision. And staff, go ahead and Stacy, you have a presentation?
Mr. President.
Councilman Borden.
Just real quick, I was absent at the public hearing when this first was presented, but have had an opportunity to review the materials and catch up and get up to speed. So I feel comfortable participating with today's hearing.
Thank you, Councilman Borden. Stacy?
Good evening, City Councilman, President, and City Council members. So this application was continued from the hearing from March 14th to April 18th due to requesting an ACHD representative to be present and additional transportation information as it relates to the extension of West Pine Avenue. I will just go over a few highlighted items to remind everybody about the project. It was requesting annexation zoning and preliminary plat for 5.23 acres. It was a 24 lot subdivision with four common lots for single-family residential detached homes at a gross density of 4.59 units per acre. There is an existing home that is proposed on Lot 1, Block 2. Due to access availability, staff recommended that the development shall not commence until a public road access is available to the site upon development of the Horse Meadows subdivision prior to submitting a final plat for approval. The applicant has met all of the open space and amenity requirements. And commission did recommend approval of the application. Key issues I can go over from the commission were timing of the proposed development, not commencing until a public road access is available to the site upon development of the Horse Meadows subdivision to the north. And there was a comment made of recommend or request that a historical advisory committee work with the city. I'm preserving the Roosevelt Elementary School that was used in 1910 that was located on the property to the west, and staff has looked that up, and that is designated as residential, and someone is living there owning it. So I don't know that that was the property that they were referring to. There weren't any outstanding issues for counsel. There were the same written testimonies of the three individuals that had concerns with traffic and would like to see a better transition with larger lot sizes. And staff did some research prior to the meeting, and Foxcroft subdivision has finished laying the bridge across Ten Mile Creek. And Fox, Foxcroft subdivision, whoops, sorry, is required to construct the full extension of the West Pine Avenue with the first phase of that development. And the extension of Pine Avenue is scheduled to be finished by late summer, fall of 2023. Horse Meadows subdivision to the north of this submitted a time extension on December 12th, 2022 to obtain the city engineer's signature on the final plat prior to January 12th, 2025. Staff has not received a final plat application for Horse Meadows to anticipate when development will commence. And also, staff is still requesting that council strike the condition under A3C pertaining to the landscape plan submitted. Depict an open vision fence at least six feet in height around the Purdum Drain Gulch per UDC 113A-6. And I have also pulled up the preliminary plat, so you can see how the subdivision to the north is depending on this, this one is depending on the subdivision to the north to be developed. And then here are the landscape plans and some of the amenities that were provided for the site. And you can see how the, the new road constructed going east-west and how the property to the west will develop in the future, some type of concept for that. And staff stands for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions? Councilwoman Perrow?
Thank you. Stacy, did I correctly hear you that Pine will have some additional improvements beyond installing the bridge? And it's anticipated to be open late summer, early fall this year?
Councilman President Hoagland, Councilwoman Perrow, yes, that is correct. So the Foxstraw, Foxcroft subdivision is supposed to develop, to finish those improvements.
And we do have a representative of ACHD online. I'm sure we'll talk after the applicant discusses some things, and we can ask those questions, too, about some of those things, issues that came up at the last meeting. So the applicant like to come and present. You can state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. David Bailey, Bailey Engineering, 1119 East State Street in Eagle is my office address. Representing the applicant. And I'm stepping in here to cover for Kent Brown, who was the planner. And he's on his way back from Hawaii today, so he got a nice vacation. I got back earlier from my vacation, so I ended up being selected to come in here. From that perspective, though, I appreciate Stacy's presentation there, you know, and I think we got most of the thing covered on this, and there's some questions about the road. I am actually the engineer for the developer of the Foxcroft subdivision and the Ten Pines subdivision, and worked on Chesterfield and worked on Coral Creek and on Castle Brook all the way along here and on Sommersby on the northeast side. So I've been watching Pine Street for an awful long time. And we did the engineering design on the, on the Pine Street Bridge last year, including all the flood study work. That deck is actually in place now. The winter, winter work is done. That deck is actually in place now. The winter winter work is done, so we can't be held up by the irrigation season on that. And their plan is, I think they're having a, we talked to Sean Brownlee with Trilogy today and the pre-construction conference tomorrow. That road is already the improvements at the intersection are done and the road is in in front of the of the Barron project that's there. They're building there, and then that'll continue and be paved across. Now, all the improvements are all the way down the street to the north boundary of this project with the Chesterfield and Castle Brook projects, right? So those are all in there. And we're in agreement with the, and they said that that should be paved and ready to go. We're hoping to record that plat and have that all done here this fall. So by September of this year is our intent to have that road fully open all the way, all the way through there. The Horse Meadows subdivision, the developer did talk to that that developer on that, and they've submitted a time extension because they, the original developer had sold the project to someone else, so someone else is on that. They do intend to move forward on that, and we do understand the condition. You know, that we can't build here until we get public road access. We certainly don't have frontage. We don't have a road. We don't have fire access. We don't have anything that can get us there, so we don't have a problem with that. I think Kent Kent mentioned to me, and I don't think we're opposed to the to the condition to do that. Like I just said, we're accepting that. But the but the condition is written in such a way that it says that we can't submit our construction drawings for approval, or I'm not sure exactly how it's written, that we can't submit our construction drawing for approval, you know, prior to prior to them actually building out that subdivision. I'm not sure that was the intent. Right? So we wouldn't build anything and couldn't even get in there and actually work on it until that their plat is underway and under construction. And then, of course, we wouldn't be able to file the plat until that right of way is public in front of us and fully accepted. You know, so we wouldn't be building any homes in there. You want to make sure that we, you know, that we just clarify in there that it says we could submit our plans and be ready to go, you know, such that we could do that. So I'm not sure if that's a point of contention or something, but I did want to bring it up and kind of ask me to mention. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions you might have, and happy to hear that ACHD did get on.
Council, any questions for Mr. Bailey? Councilwoman Perrow.
See you, Mr. Bailey. Question about the, if you know your client's plans for kind of where they'll stage their their construction vehicles, apparatuses. This is the it sounds like you've spent some time out there. That intersection of Black Cat and Pine is really busy. And I'm just wondering, you know, you'll have you'll have some concrete trucks and and other large tractors that are probably making rights or lefts onto Pine, and then they're going to immediately need to access the property, the Horse Meadows and your property to the south. Do you have, is there some coordination between the applicants on kind of how that's going to work? How they stay off of Pine as much as possible? Any information along? This is just really unique corner, and I think it's going to be, I think it could create some potential traffic issues there.
Mr. Bailey?
Oh, Councilman President and Councilman Perrow. I guess I don't have those specific plans in place. One of the things here that, you know, obviously with the construction of the Horse Meadows subdivision, they're going to do the, there's an asphalt widening on Black Cat and then all of the curb and gutter improvements and then sidewalk both on Black Cat and there. So as far as pedestrians, they would have to maintain that and in place. As far as where we would actually stage equipment, may it be subject to the ACHD right of way permit, which they would need to do that work, right? So I think you probably have a greater concern during the construction of of the Horse Meadows than you do during this project. I would suspect that since we're probably going to follow right on the tails of the Horse Meadows, that their property would be up for us staging our equipment, doing the exact same thing. We're off the road quite a bit, and I do know those are pretty well controlled by Ada County Highway District. It looked to me like the plans for actually improving Black Cat to five lanes looked like, you know, 2030 on that number. I've spent some time on that committee as well with the Ada County Highway District in the long range, you know, planning on stuff, and I'm not sure, quite sure why that's out there, but those can change, you know, as they go along on that that end of it. So the the Black Cat, and obviously we got more projects to the south and up to the north on here that they're going to impact that. I don't think this project necessarily impacts any of that, and I don't think the construction should be a problem considering ACHD right of way permit, you know, restrictions.
And Mr. Bailey, for your information, in our last go around for our priority list for streets and bridges and whatnot for our community that we sent to ACHD, the the Black Cat portion was moved up to the top 20, so
Great.
more of a priority for for our community as well, so, yeah. Council, any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. President.
Councilman Morton.
Dave, just to your comment, you making sure we're on the same page as far as the conditions of approval that you are referencing at the tail end of your comments. Stacy, was there any, do we have, feel like we have any disconnect in the proposed conditions that you were referencing as far as submission, submittal of construction? Drawings being permissible?
Councilman President Hoagland and Councilman Borden, so you're wanting to submit the land development records for the roadways, you're asking, or the final plat?
So we'd want to submit the application, the the final plat application to the city, which includes the construction drawings on. And then we wouldn't be able to submit the final plat to the city engineer for signature until that public right of way.
So you're asking to be able to submit the final plat for approval, but not the final plat Mylar? So I know Kent had mentioned because I know that there is some work that can be done once you submit the final plat and post surety, and you can get things done through different phases, but we wouldn't allow that. We could probably change the language on this. Just to say that you're change the condition to read that you're able to submit the final plat for approval, but but not, you you should not commence development until a public road access is available.
Yeah, it depends on what, I guess it depends on what development means.
I know.
Improvements to the site constitute the development, or is it actually pulling a building permit? We can't get the plat recorded.
Well, site improvements are what needs to happen first.
Right, right.
Water, sewer, roadway.
And the only disconnect is is that, you know, from the time we submit the construction drawings and the final plat to the city, and then your process has us take the 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 plat actually goes to the city council before the staff will even review the construction drawings. And now we've got a four-month wait with Highway Ada County Highway District and several month wait, at least with the city, to review the construction drawings. So if we waited until their plats recorded, for example, to do that, now we're six months out before we can even start. And normally we can submit the construction drawings for approval, you know, at any time during the process, but we can't get a pre-construction conference to start construction, so we have public road access to that that be part of our.
And then the final plat goes on consent agenda, so. I'm not sure if staff's comfortable with that for this project. Kent was talking about proposing an easement dedication with ACHD. Or some sort of thing to replace this the last time we were here, and we were amenable to that. I know the the language needs to change.
And so we can work on the wording of that, I just maybe.
Well, we are open to that. It just needs to be whether it needs to be an easement through dedication of roadway for ACHD for Quarter Host Lane for the property owner that's fronting there, or however. That was his proposal last time.
It seems to me that for the protection of the city and the residents that we don't get the, we don't get anything until we get the plat recorded, and our plat cannot record prior to Horse Meadows recording there. And so what happens on the site as far as construction prior to them recording that plat is the developer building things on the site to his expense at no value to him unless Horse Meadows records their plat. So it should be, it seems to me that normally what we see is a condition such that we can't record our plat until they record their plat. And so to hold that up, we usually hold up the city engineer's signature on the.
That's amenable. Yes.
Councilman Borden.
Work, thank you. Well, getting that sorted out, and if I understand that correctly, the public road would be in on that project to the north as part of that final plat? No, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, yeah, before they record their final plat, that has to be all constructed.
Good.
Yeah, Councilman Borden, went back to the minutes because I know I had read that that Kent was worried about having to wait four months without being able to do that and missing the window for doing other development, site development, those types of things. So I think we were on the same page. It's just how do we word that? How do we get there and those types of things, so. Yeah, anything, any other questions for the applicant this time? Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you. Did we resolve? The, do we resolve staff's recommendation to move the temporary turnaround into lots five through seven instead of where it currently exists? Was that, that was a recommendation made in the staff report. I want to make sure that it's on record what what the applicant's thoughts are on that. Staff would like to comment on that as well. That would be fine.
Councilman President Hoagland, Councilwoman Perrow, so we did discuss that, and we have the developer set aside funds for remediation of the temporary turnaround in a form of a surety. The hold for the HOA, and then once development continues to the west and that's no longer needed, then the money will be taken care of to to replace that with landscaping.
Thank you, Stacy. I guess no further questions for now. We'll have Christie Unsmann come on. I think there were some issues, questions for ACHD. Christie, if you can unmute, and we recognize you for or comments, if you have any, or would you like to take questions? Am I supposed to do something, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, no, Christie's unmuted. I'm just not sure. She can hear us. It doesn't look like, there she is.
Hi, Christie, can you hear us? Because we can't hear you if you're speaking.
Mr. President, the microphone signal's not moving, so it doesn't look like there's any speaking happening.
We'll, we'll just move forward and when we get Christie hooked up. Is there anybody else who's signed up to testify?
Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Oh, yes, Christie, you're back.
Okay. I got promoted to panelist, and then I could, then you could hear me.
Yep, that works.
All right. I am happy to take questions. I think staff did a great job of giving an update on the timing for the construction of Pine, and that was a question. But I'm happy to answer any additional questions that the council may have on this project.
Council, any questions for ACHD? Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you, Christie, for being here. My question is currently Pine Avenue is not striped. And there's not bike lanes and eyeballing it, it doesn't look like it is a width that would accommodate bike lanes. And, you know, lanes in both directions. Just just wanted to get some more information on how that will be improved once the connection or before the connection comes through in September.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Perrow, I'm, I actually have a handy dandy measure tool on here to see. It looks like we have 34 feet of right of way. Well, that's basically the pavement width is about 34, 35 feet. And depending on whether parking is allowed or not, that would be an adequate width for dedicated bike lanes if that's the plan for this in the future, which I can also look up if you would like.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I I only heard a portion of what you had mentioned. I heard that the width is appropriate for bike lanes. Did you mention what was going to happen with the striping?
The striping may be a future project. I apologize. I didn't hear that as a question prior, so I was not prepared. Let me get to that area and pull the adequate maps up. Okay, so pine.
Mr. President. Christie, if you can hear me, you are able to share your screen if you would like to and if you need to.
Okay, let me, sorry. I'm working on my laptop, so it's never as as big as the nice two screens I have when I'm in the office. So I can share with you a a map of so the the map that's available on your screen, this is a representation of our low-stress bikeway network. As you can see, Pine Street is identified as a future low-stress bike bike network. It doesn't go all the way to Linder, but it does. The remainder would be here, sorry. Too many layers on my computer. Yeah. I actually get all the way over to Black Cat. So from that point, it's just a, it's a level two facility where we would anticipate either if we have enough availability and there's no parking, we would have room to do bike lanes. Otherwise, we would do sharrows, like a shared facility and signage. But that's a future, that's a future treatment that we would do once the roadway is is through. I hope that makes sense as I'm throwing random maps up on the screen for you.
So President.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. I was asking, obviously, there's several schools in that area, and then you have access to Fuller Park from that neighborhood, and so just just wanted to make sure that was an option. There's two two or three bus stops along Pine there. I lived in the neighborhood there in Chesterfield for 12 years and saw a lot of really bad driving behavior. And speeding, crossing over, and so this, that's the reason I was asking about the striping for the safety of the it just kind of acts right now like a as if it was a subdivision street, even though it's not, it's a collector, so the residents treat it as if it's their own street as part of their subdivision instead of, you know, for public use, so.
Right.
Kind of see how that was going to develop now that it was going to be connected to Ten Mile, and there's an anticipation that traffic will increase.
Yeah, we we treat these, we look at each corridor individually, but we have a lot of treatment options that we can look at for bike facilities themselves. So there's vertical elements we can look at dependent on volumes, speed limit along the corridor. But generally with something like this, we would want to wait till the connections are done, get an idea of what the traffic is going to start doing once it's completed. And then we would add that to our list to evaluate for a treatment type. Sometimes it's just a painted buffer. There's there's multiple options we can do.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Christie, can you give council a little flavor for what your what the highway district's engagement is with with the railroad? You know, we we touched on this this last week. I've got some real concerns about the the stop sign at the railway and believe I know that you guys are waiting until 2030 to potentially expand Black Cat, that that stop sign at the railway is a is a huge bottleneck and maybe giving council a flavor for what highway district can do or would do to maybe get that moved from a stop sign to engaging with the railroad about a about a crossing.
Mr. Go ahead.
Mr. President, I couldn't see, I think that was I'm not sure who was speaking. It didn't come up on my screen.
Don't worry about it.
Councilman Cavanagh, thank you so much. We, when we do roadway projects, we always engage with them if if we hear that there, we are currently working with the railroad and a couple other locations where there's an existing stop sign with the railroads to see what other treatments we can do so that it doesn't create some bottlenecks. I'm happy to talk to our traffic department about the stop sign at Black Cat. And since they're already engaged currently with the railroad and see if there's something that potentially could be done otherwise there. The roadway itself, we don't currently have it in the integrated five-year work plan. But Mr. Hoagland, as you, or Councilman Hoagland, as you spoke earlier. But Mr. Hoagland, as you, or Councilman Hoagland, as you spoke earlier, that did go up significantly in the city of Meridian's prioritization request. Last year it was 62 or the last submission was 62. Now it's in the top 20 and it's your number two unprogrammed. So that will definitely lend to us looking at getting this particular project programmed with this next update.
Thanks, Christie. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Christie at this time, council? Yes, thank you, Christie. We didn't have anybody signed up to testify. Would the applicant like to come forward for any closing comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember David Bailey again. I don't have any rebuttal of anything. I appreciate that the ACHD came and got some answers on that stuff and I, I think we, we've resolved most of the issues on this. This is kind of the last, almost the last thing on, on this stretch of road. And like I said earlier, working on getting all these pieces put together over the years, it seems really neat for Meridian to get here. My first office was in Meridian at Pine and Linder. It's to the east of the high school in 1993. So I've been in this area for a while. So I think this could be a neat area. And this, this is great with your comprehensive plan and we'd ask for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Any last questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Council, what is your pleasure on this project?
Mr. President.
Councilman Borton.
I think that, you know, good work's been done on this, that from it being consistent with the comp plan, what's intended as far as intensity and type of use at this location. It's relatively small, somewhat infill type project that has a couple of wrinkles that have been worked out over the the couple of public hearings that we've had and P and Z's recommendation approval, I think makes sense as well. So right of the clarification that's been provided conditions at today's hearing, I'm supportive of the application as present.
Have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Mr. President. Do you want to close the public hearing?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Let's have a motion to close the public hearing. Is that what you said, Councilman?
No, I was just ruminating on some initial thoughts. But I can do that. Mr. President, I move we close the public hearing on H 2022 0084.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, close the public hearing. All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, we close the public hearings. Councilman Borton, more rumination, please.
That was it. That was my rumination. So I'll pause a moment and see if any other council members have.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cavanagh.
To be filed under, under rumination. I I'm struggling with, with this project. I, I agree a lot with Councilmember Borton's comments. This is a small project falls within the comprehensive plan. Staff and applicant have, I think, worked this project out to make it successful. I feel that I'm supportive today, but I have some real concerns about what the traffic impacts on Black Cat are going to be once Pine is completed. You know, we've got a roadway, Black Cat, that's, that's better than Dean, looks like can accommodate, you know, some more, some more vehicles. This, this is not the first time we've talked about Black Cat and my concerns about development that's occurring over there and the impact on Black Cat. This project is certainly not the the fly that's going to break the camel's back. But I do think that we as a body need to be exerting some caution and some patience on future applications that come through on Black Cat. Until we have a better sense as to what and if the roadway improvements are going to be accelerated past 2030. I think we've got a couple of things that are going to all come together at the same time. A handful of housing projects that are moving forth in that area coupled with Pine's expansion. We really have the potential for a recipe of disaster. And so I, I think I can be supportive tonight, but I and this is also just, I think, good feedback for staff as you were hearing from people coming in with pre apps. I am a council member that is going to be really reluctant on future residential applications that impact Black Cat. Just again, filing under rumination outward discussion. I am struggling though with this particular project for those reasons, Mr. President.
Thank you, Cavanagh.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. President, members of council, I just wanted to let you know after the discussion both on this project as well as Newkirk, I did reach out to Miranda in planning since she is our school contact person. And so she has reached out to Compass Charter School and kind of talked about these issues you're concerned with. Hasn't had a response back, so she's going to go be more diligently and actually go there to find a contact person and be able to sort of get in front of these issues now versus later. So, so she is working on it. So.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mary. And then that is one of the issues, Black Cat Compass Charter is there are times of day before school and after school, there's no turn lane on Black Cat going into or coming out of that school. I, it just boggles my mind that how that happened how it came about without having such a significant road issue. And that's why, you know, and I understand ACHD wants to do full miles, but at the same time, they've got the full intersection improved at Franklin and Black Cat. And they've got the right of way on those houses on the east side to come up at least complete a turn lane in the interim. Makes, makes sense. It just, but there are times of day I know that I will not go down that road because it's going to be a major mess. As, as a Councilwoman Pearl knows all too well, I'm sure from her time there. So. But anyway, so that is something that, and it will be interesting to see the dynamics with Pine once that opens. I think there'll be a lot more people headed to 10 Mile instead of trying to make their way out to Black Cat because of that. But and of course, our Meridian Police Department can always be strong on enforcement if there are problems that, that come up on, on Pine with, with few people who don't think speed limits apply to them. So.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Yeah, that's why I have been, I have been so noisy about this area. When I was in, Compass was approved when I was on planning and zoning and I was just as noisy then with the same questions about the turn lanes. But I have the same, I share the same concern as Councilman Cavanagh. I don't think this application is going to tip, you know, tip this over. So I agree in that regard. But when we, when we discussed this with Horse Meadows, the response was, oh, well, you know, likely now most folks from these surrounding neighborhoods are going to, are going to head east on Pine and they're, and they're going to get to 10 Mile. And I don't disagree with that. However, Pine connects to El Gato, which is in the county, and El Gato connects to McDermott, which is going to be one of the main accesses for Highway 16. And so I do think we're going to have a lot of traffic heading west that, that maybe we would not have otherwise expected. So I don't know El Gato is going to connect at 16 or at McDermott. And I don't know from there where, whether folks can take McDermott and get an access to Highway 16 or not. They won't be able to.
Yeah. Councilwoman Pearl, as my understanding, there are only certain segments of Eustick, not McMillan, but Eustick. I believe, and Christie, you'll probably have better insight into this, the connections into Highway 16 are going to be Eustick, Franklin, and were those the only two? What were they doing with Cherry? I don't think Cherry was included in that.
Mr. President, I don't believe there was a direct connection to 16 from Cherry. No.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pearl.
So a driver wouldn't head west to McDermott and then take a left and go south to Franklin to access 16?
They would have to, yes, Councilwoman Pearl, they would have to turn left and head to Franklin to get onto Highway 16. There's no direct connection from, from Pine or El Gato.
El Gato connects to McDermott. It does. So they would, they would, they could take El Gato, get to McDermott, make a left and get on Highway 16.
Yes.
And, and Mr. President, Commission, Commissionwoman Pearl, they, they're, just so you know, sorry. I am doing five things at the same time. We, or sorry, McDermott is going to be realigned. So it'll actually pull back from its current location. And then they'll be able to turn and make that, that connection. Just so you're aware, it's not, it won't stay in the existing location that it's at. It's actually going to be pulled east and realigned.
Yes, there's, I have seen, to Christie's point, I have seen the ITD map and then they pull that over where the highway goes and it's basically a frontage type of road. Hard to explain. I haven't looked at it for a while, but it, it does get pulled back. But there are access points then that you can go to Eusti, or Cherry and down, and they have those connections. But it is something that, you know, we're paying attention to, especially from the fire department for access purposes, because there's going to be limited access from the highway, new highway. But how to, how to maneuver within that. So.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Overton.
So far the comments have been fantastic. I agree with Councilman Borton's and Councilman Cavanagh's on specifically two points. I can, I'm concerned about this geographical area. I'm not concerned about this application. I think this application is a good application. It's a small infill. That's going to, you know, it's going to fall behind the, the one to the north of it as it comes on. I think you're going to have the connection at Pine happen. And I was trying to summon my crystal ball and figure out where that traffic's all going to go. I'd like to think that most of it's going to go east on Pine, head to 10 Mile to access the interstate. But potentially I've watched when Locust Grove Overpass went in, the rule of the land is if you build it, they will find the quickest way to get to where they want to go, no matter what we think. And only time will tell us as these get developed and built, where those new roadway demands are going to be and how best we adjust our next year's priorities to make sure that we're keeping up with where that demand is. For the purposes of the project tonight, I'm supportive of that project.
Councilman Borton, yes.
I move that we approve H 2022 0084 consistent with the staff report as presented dated April 18th, 2023.
I have a motion, a second for approval. Question for staff, do we need to strike condition A3C? And do we need to keep the Purdum drain open and make that as part of the condition to keep it open? Or is that in the staff report?
Mr. President, yes. I need you to state that you would like that condition strike or struck.
Right. Okay.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Borton.
Motion so includes those provisions. It also includes any clarification articulated by staff and the applicant with regards to the conditions presented at tonight's hearing as well.
There's a second, second agrees. Okay. We have a motion before us for approval with agreement with the conditions. Mr. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Overton, Pearl, Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Staff, thank you for your effort tonight. Next up, we have ordinance number 23 2015. Mr. Clerk, would you be, read the ordinance by title only?
I think, Mr. President, it's an ordinance related to Pinedale subdivision H 2022 0001 annexing a portion of the southeast quarter of the, of section 10. Township three north, range one west, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Or particularly described in exhibit A, rezoning 1.22 acres of such real property from RUT to R8. Directing city staff to alter all applicable use and area maps as well as the official zoning maps and all official maps depicting the boundaries in the zoning districts of the city of Meridian in accordance with this ordinance. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law. Repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
You've heard the ordinance read by title only? Is there anyone who would like to hear the ordinance read in full? Ralph is not wanting to do that. We have a motion.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Keep putting to say Mr. Mayor.
I move that we approve ordinance number 23-2015.
Second.
Motion, second to approve the ordinance. Mr. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Overton, Pearl, Cavanagh, Borton, Hoagland.
Aye. All ayes, motion carries. Future meeting topics, anything? All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those.